Oops. Big mess. Check one.
Uh, this one's uh...
I was sorry.
Trying to see if we could even do anything with this. I don't think we can. I just want my toe off. All right, I've got a little meeting. Everybody stand please. Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation, our God, indivisible, with every justice and all. In vacation. Lord, thank you for allowing us another day and gathering us all this evening. Please be with us to do what we can to make our little city better and go with each of us in the evening when we leave and watch over our families. Thank you, Lord. Prayer with them. Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Roll call please.
Commissioner Tally?
Here.
And Commissioner Hick?
Here.
Yeah. Commissioner, I mean, Mayor Collins is absent tonight, so I'll be conducting the meeting, so uh... Did you get a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. I did too, so do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second the motion, so roll call please.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hick?
Yes.
Report to the Lord. Anything?
No. Just not anything new that would not...
Okay. I will say that we were able to attend the development district meeting a couple of weeks ago, yeah, and it was very good, very informative.
Very.
Spent three days. They covered everything anyway, so it was a very good thing. Covered a lot of the stuff for the district and inner-city community. Beyond that, I really don't have anything either. I'm sure Doug could have more. But all right, so under new business, we have... We've received, the good news is anyway, a grant from... I can't remember who it is.
The DABs.
Diabetes.
Oh, childhood, childhood DABs.
Childhood DABs. Make sure you get your name right. So anyway, they have granted us $150,000 to use on the park at, with no match. So there's a couple of different things that we can do with it, and when we made the application, you know, one thing we're looking at initially was doing some upgrades to, when we made the application anyway, was doing some upgrades to the tennis courts. So it kind of drug out, and we had already, so we went ahead and spent a little bit of funds anyway and created the pickleball courts from the tennis courts and resealed it and everything, so we got it looking good. Thank you, Ms. Wood. She, she done a good job of that one. So anyway, so that was one thing that we could do with it, but we've already done some. The other was playground equipment and then some paving for a walking trail or actually resurfacing the tennis courts for that. They would allow us to use it, but then we've already spent that money. You know, we're gonna look at using the money probably for playground equipment, new picnic tables under the pavilion, and then we can consider paving the parking area for the park there for ADA compliance. They would allow that. So a couple of things, but for, so anyway, to work through the process and kind of expedite, because we've got to spend all the funds by June is one of the requirements, and it won't carry over, so we'll need to figure out, anyway, go under a, what they're suggesting is anyway, and we're allowed to do this, is to go under a cooperative purchasing. If not, we have our, basically, we have our, in our ordinances anyway, we can only, for like $2,500, we've got to have, you know, three quotes, you know, from like Walmart or...
Different vendors.
Different vendors or whatever, and then from $2,500 to $7,500, we have to have basically written quotes, and then anything over $7,500, we have to actually go through our regular bidding process. But if we go under one of the cooperatives, which a lot of the cities in the state of Tennessee are under anyway, or the state also has a selection every year, every two years, that they already do a pre-qualification for bidding processes. So we, we can go under those without having to follow the bidding process, because it's already been bid out and low-priced. You know, they require that, so that's probably the direction would be there under the state. But to go under the cooperative purchasing agreements anyway, we need to do a resolution, and we've got it wrote up, and it's Resolution 20213. And basically, the heading is Resolution to the City of Duck Town, Tennessee, to authorize cooperative purchasing agreements for the use and benefit of all city departments. So you're welcome to get a copy of it if you want to and look at it and get a chance to look at it, but any discussion?
No.
Okay. All right. Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion, I'll second the motion to approve Resolution 213. Roll call please.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hick?
Yes.
And as part of that also, you know, we talked a minute ago about the, we'd already done some work to the pickleball courts, we'll call them now. They would have allowed us to put the money that we'd spent and reclaim it under that if we'd have completed the work after August 1st. And we actually signed the checks and completed the thing prior to.
Yeah. It was close, too.
I knew it would be. So, so we won't be able to do that, so it's part of that, I guess we need to have a discussion.
What exactly?
What exactly we're gonna pursue. I mean, I think the, I think the playground equipment for sure.
Yeah.
I think the picnic tables, but that certainly, those two are not gonna get us to the amount.
No, no. I know, I have no idea on the prices. I know it's gonna be crazy, but I would really, really like to get away from the mulch. That is more, so expensive, it's just breeding gra, it's just nasty. That was my, I would love to get that out of there and look at getting a canopy. The vi, you know, the can, you know, the ones, I almost said it's vinyl, but I guess it is vinyl. It's just a canopy that goes over the playground equipment where it's not so hot. That would be my first two things that I want, because the mulch is an ongoing thing. We gotta, you gotta worry about what's in it, and it's just...
Yeah, and, and we've looked at that before. They make some, basically, it's ground tires that doesn't mold.
Yeah, have you seen the, the bottom that I'm talking about?
Yeah, they make a pad also.
Yeah, it's just like, and you don't ever have to do, I mean, you don't have to do anything. It's there.
Yeah. And we can look at, yeah, I'm...
I'm sure they're super expensive, but while we've got the grant, I think it'd be a good time to try to get, yeah.
Yeah, well, I think, look at that.
And I think it makes it more accessible to kids that have disabilities or someone that can't get into the playground with the mulch and roll them through. It gives everybody, you know, I think it can be utilized a little more.
Yeah. Yeah, and that would help. And then trying to figure out what kind of additions we'll add to it.
Yeah.
And then kind of, if we can quickly do that, then we can figure out, I think the other thing that they approved, like I said, was doing some paving, either a paved trail for ADA around part of the park or to pave the parking area itself. And if we did that, then I would, I'd recommend anyway, and seeing what the additional cost would be to pave the whole entrance while they're doing that.
Yep. I'll get to work on looking and getting some process in.
Okay. Do that and then...
I will.
That way we can get with them.
Yep.
Okay. Nothing else on the agenda?
I did talk to them again about, you know, talking about us needing more security up there, though. But I think that's something we're probably just gonna have to, we're gonna have to do ourselves. And I don't want to put even more money up there if we can't, you know, the gate and the cameras is, it's a big thing.
Yeah, well, I think we need to go ahead and just pull the trigger on the gate.
I agree.
And...
I agree. I think that's a, that's a whole thing all around.
The last one you got was five?
It was.
Five or six? Yeah, that's, it's worth that.
Because they were gonna be able to use the existing we've got, but put the automatic on it. Yeah.
So if you don't mind, why don't we gather all that back up? And then next meeting, we'll go ahead and look at running that through. Because, yeah, I agree with that, and we need to go ahead and get us some updated equipment.
Absolutely. Yeah, we have to. I mean, there's no sense in putting money in it if we're just gonna let people go up there and tear it up.
Right. Well, that's getting the additional funding from diabetes groups, and we can afford to spend some money.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Anything else?
No. I've got several of the things ordered in here for Christmas in Duck Town. We're still, the tree has not shipped, so it's not, it's not been charged yet. We're waiting on it, because I went ahead and did the, now, I, of course, we couldn't get the commercial-grade outdoor tree, but this one is, I don't know how to explain it, I'm horrible explaining things. It's the lights that come all the way down. It's a lighted tree. It's not an actual tree, like, the commercial-grade ones, six grand or more.
Yeah.
So I think for now, this is, you know, I think we're gonna have to build up. But this one, it's 20-foot, it's, it'll be, it'll be good, though.
Good.
Got that going. More stuff to do, some decorating there through the main strip and try to pull some more stuff together and get some more posts out there about people dropping off the wreaths and stuff that are hung through town. But so far, I think we're pretty good. The boys have already started on the, the big lights are up, so.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're getting there.
Go ahead and see them start early.
Yeah, me too.
They took their banners down too, like they should have. That's, that's great.
Yep.
That way they're not sitting out here getting weathered. Okay. Spoiler's announcements, November 11th, city hall will be closed for Veterans Day. November 20th will be the planning commission meeting.
I saw that message from John.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, you got the training?
I saw, but I haven't...
It's like December 6th, something like that, out in Cleveland.
Isn't that our...
December 6th is the Christmas...
It's a, what is it?
Is it the same one like last year that I went to?
No, this, no, this is actually, might be the first.
Okay. Is this about the same one I went to last year? Okay.
Yes. Planning, training for you.
Ah, gotcha.
Housing board meeting, November 25th at 5:30. And then November 27th and 28th, city hall will be closed for Thanksgiving. Trash will be collected Friday between 8:00 a.m. and 11:00. So they'll, they'll come in and gather it up that morning. All right. Any questions, comments?
Well, I have a complaint, but first I'll say thank you for good service on trash pickup. Anytime I call for anything extra, they, they're over there in just a minute, but um... It's been ongoing for a while, and at times it worse, but most recently, it's gotten worse and worse, is dogs barking continuously, pretty much 24/7. They probably bark 30 minutes to 40 minutes out of every hour sometimes. And, you know, I kind of think dogs are like babies. They're not barking unless something's wrong, and I have seen them running loose multiple times as well. But they will go at it for hours, and they were barking at 2:30 last night. They were barking when I left them down here. Sometimes it's three or four, sometimes it sounds like 10 or 12, sometimes it sounds like 15 or 20. Sometimes they will get going good, and it sounds like every dog from the tennis courts all the way to the libraries barking.
Really?
Yeah.
Is it a bunch of stray ones, or is it like dogs in...
These mostly are dogs in, in lots, and there's multiple per household, several households, and like I say, all hours of the day and night. And it just has progressively gotten worse and worse and worse. And sometimes it almost seems like there is a pattern of every other night. And they literally, sometimes they'll stop 2:30, 2, 2:30 sometimes, and then they will start before daylight again. But I have seen them running loose. I take my trash out at night, and I've seen them running around loose. And I've seen a small one loose during the day, like in line.
I've seen that dog too.
So you're on, I, I'm just, so you're on Main Street?
Main Street.
Other side of the church?
Yes. Yes, and I mean, it literally sounds like sometimes 15 or 20 dogs.
Really?
But there's several per house, right, midways of the hill. And they've, when one starts, they kind of agitate each other, and they all got going. If somebody comes up the street or down the street with a dog in the car or walking a dog, it's a totally different sound, and they all go nuts. It is, some nights, it's really hard to sleep.
Really?
And I literally, I don't have windows open. I have, you know, houses insulated really, really well, and it literally sounds like they're standing in the front yard.
Do you know which ones, the ones that are running loose belong to?
I don't know who they are.
Okay. If you, I mean, we, that's something, you know, we can't, even if we can't let their dogs run loose anymore.
Yeah. One of them's a hound dog, looks like Smokey. The other one is a mid-sized black dog, looks like a lab, but it's not as tall as a lab. And then, then there's one yard that they really don't get out that much, but they bark a lot.
The, towards the barking, I mean, if, if, do they have, I mean, is it multiple dogs in one, one place?
Yep. And primarily from two different, two different houses that the bulk of the dogs are from, and then the third across the street.
If you, if you don't mind sharing, I mean, you can get it to Cheryl or whatever, but just the location where they're at or whatever.
I don't know the numbers, but yeah, I mean, one of them...
She's pretty good. You can describe, she knows pretty good what numbers and so far, if you can, yeah.
Uh, well, it's, it's the houses that, that are, have the rough yards that...
Okay. She knows.
Okay. But I mean, we can, I mean, as long as you're, you know...
He went down there and talked to them about 10 days ago, and they said they would put them up. That lasted for about a day or two, and then that was right back.
Well, we can see what additional we can do then. Because they, yeah, it's...
And I can, I complained to Doug about his, but he's been doing really good, and he puts, he's been putting his in the back or putting them up, so he just hasn't been a problem lately. But literally, even the double-wide that's up on the hill behind, kind of catty corner behind the church, their dog never barks, but these dogs get going so that their dog barks and literally...
Stairs and all that.
Even dogs down Schoolhouse Hill are barking. They literally get every dog on the hill barking, going. And like I say, it makes it hard to sleep.
I've seen the dogs out there in the road too, so...
I've, they've been, in the middle of the night, they'll be running up down the road, because I can hear them, and I look out, and there they are.
Did you get Mike to go down there?
Yeah, so I started saying, so that, so you, we'd had Mike, or he'd already been down there once, to one of them, take him. Yeah.
Yeah, because they kind of got letters to type down there, you know, with the ordinance and...
And some of our new ordinances and stuff, you know, they get the letters, they get the warnings, and you know, they gotta, they gotta buy bomb now, or there's, we have stipulations now. There's fines and stuff, so we can, we can send him down there and see where we're at.
Yeah. Anything else?
Well, you know, just a safety issue of, one of the, one of the neighbors told me that somebody down the hill had seen a coyote mom and two pups on her camera.
Don't surprise me, every once in a while, they come through.
So, I mean, all it takes, they carry rabies, and you know how, how bad rabies is to spray or spread, how contagious it is, all it would take would be a little scrap with a, a dog and a coyote for rabies to get started.
Yeah. It don't, yeah...
Or a cat even.
Well, they're right. Dogs should be vaccinated against rabies anyway.
Supposed to be.
Should be. Don't mean that they are.
I mean, you got clinics, Dr. Mitchell's doing a clinic.
Yeah, they do it for free. Ain't no reason not to now. But yeah, but occasionally, a coyote will show up every year or two.
Well, I've...
They're here regardless anyway.
I've seen the same one during the day twice, and he is massive. I mean, massive.
I think I've seen the same one you saw down at Car Wash.
Yes, he runs right, he's run in front of me twice, coming right down the hill right here, and it'll go up towards like, up where Mama lives.
Yes, I've seen the same one, and it is huge.
It is massive.
But they've also had them, they're, they're in the cemetery sometimes. I guess there's squirrels, mice, whatever, moles. I have moles. But they are in, I hear them in the cemetery sometimes, but I hear them a lot out there across from your house, Cheryl, up in that holler that comes around into the back of my house. They are in there a lot. In fact, I used to have deer every, pretty much every day in my backyard.
Not anymore.
They've killed them all out.
That might be what's stirring some of your dogs up down there too at night.
Well, even one night that they really, really were so bad, about six or eight weeks ago, I thought, had the bear come back through, because, you know, every year, spring and the fall, they make their run on their way to going, wherever they're going, and I thought, the bear came through, and, but it's been too many nights since then, that ain't, that wasn't the deal.
I'm sure the dogs running loose keep the other ones all jacked up, so we'll send them down there and see where we're at.
I'm not even kidding. There can be a pickup or a car come by and a dog in it, and those dogs know it before they ever make it below the church or before they ever come through the stop sign at the bottom of the hill. There will be 15 dogs out there at the road barking. They know, it make great hunting dogs, but...
Don't go courting.
This ain't the woods.
He's like, I'm in the corner being quiet, and you've called me out.
I'll figure out how to catch the coyote.
Please do.
Well, actually, I have talked to the DNR, and they said that coyotes, there's no season, any, they can be gotten year-round, and the city ordinance against shooting a gun is overridden because it's a nuisance animal.
Yeah, you can't trap here really, with all the dogs blowing off proper ways, you know.
It's hard to get a good...
Covering everybody's personal, you know, animals.
It's hard to get a good shot in, because too many people around, or I already would have.
Yeah, but that's the thing, I don't know so much about overriding the city ordinance, but I mean...
DNR did tell me that, that if it's a nuisance animal, that...
Well, I think he's probably wrong there, though, but regardless, somebody, somebody with the, that is a good sportsman, I have no problem with, but...
He, he did say...
We're going everybody out here.
I promise you. I even still got his cell phone number, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, I think he's probably wrong there. I really do. But like I said, I have no problem with taking a nuisance.
He said they want, they would only trap hogs and bears.
Yeah.
But he said anybody wanted to kill them year-round and no limit.
Yeah, there's, there's no restriction on them.
And I said DNR, but it's not DNR. DNR is Georgia, it's TW or whatever.
They got it all right.
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else?
Sure.
Come on out, Paul's over there. I said, come on out here.
Well, it's been a while, but, well, as y'all know, we've been talking about this gym up here for, I don't know, eons. I've now done enough stuff that we're gonna have to get it open. Looks like it's gonna be probably around first of January, that's what we're shooting for, probably the first Monday in January. Trying to get it up and going, we're gonna do, I'll let her speak on some of that stuff that we're gonna do. We'll have different things, but my biggest concern is, is our parking. You know, that's one reason I've not opened it yet is because of the parking. Obviously, I've talked to the doctors across the way, they don't care as long as it's, you know, after hours and, and when, you know, weekends when they're not there, and then they're not there, I don't think, all day Friday.
No, they're open half-day Friday.
Yeah, so then you got that, which is good, that gives you three days, but the rest of that time, you're kind of, we're kind of jammed. I mean, when I park, when another employee parks, that's all of our space.
Right now, even before you open, you know, if you've noticed, the new rentals from your place up, there's no open spots, like, it's already, just with the new people that's...
I mean, I'm parking sometimes in a handicap spot, and I can walk with both legs just fine, but I ain't gonna where else park. We're parking on the crossment right in front of the sidewalks where they have it marked off, you know, for no parking, but nobody's saying that, and no, you know, nobody can, because they know that there's no parking. I tried even talking Angie into what man, what we was talking about the other day, just trying to make it a parking garage or something for parking would, would have been a good idea, but she ain't gonna come off that property anyway to do it, but that'd have been a good idea. But I know when we, when I was in here two or three years ago, we talked about it, we mentioned that since we may be gonna do the gym and do all that, we'll try to go ahead and try to get started and get the road stuff worked on. But I know I've talked to both y'all about it.
And I did mention it and talked to one of the guys over at the meeting about, that, you know, we really needed to get something going, and he was gonna start looking for, try to help us with some of the grants for it.
I don't know what we gotta do to do it or whatever, but, you know, there's certain things that, I mean, I'll go out there and paint on myself if I have to.
Well, what we, what we need to do, we did allocate in this year's budget, we allocated, I think, $75,000 to go ahead and, and go toward, and basically, like we talked, I think everybody's in agreement, basically, we would make it one way from Douglas Street up to Vine and, and do angle parking rather than wait. When they, when they put those in, I really wish they hadn't have done what they done, but they put in the side parking, which was fine, but they actually extended those out. The parking spaces are way too big.
They're really wide, too.
Yeah, they're wide, they're, they're way too deep for, for what they should have been, so it's really restricted.
Couple cars, it ain't like it's a major difference, but you know, still...
So, so the plan is for right now, and we have all intentions of, of doing that.
Yeah.
So we've, what Courtney was talking about, the, they're saying that there's potentially, could be some additional money from the state for the Main Street project, for a Main Street project, so they're checking right now to see if it is, and if there is, then we can, if it's within the right timeframe, then we'll, we can apply for that and use that 75 as a match and do more. But my thoughts are, if, if there's nothing there, or ain't gonna be, we need to go ahead and just take, spend the money and resurface, you know, we don't, we don't have strictly, I mean, it needs repaving anyway, but just do a couple of inches, do a couple of inches, resurface on it, and then re-stripe it at an angle parking, and that, that wouldn't take too much. I think, you know, that, that should be close enough, you know, for the money to do that. Today's time's a while, though.
Well, even, even if you just done it on one side, you don't even have to do it on both sides to drive to the middle of the cars. I mean, if we can get one side or the other, that would open up a lot, you know?
Yeah.
And you could still do your other and probably still get through, you know?
Well, the, the, yeah, I don't, I don't take you, I mean...
If you're gonna do it, though, I guess just do it.
Yeah, well, I, I think if you, when you turn them in there and you put them at an angle, the, a longer car is gonna stick out, so you're gonna restrict that lane down and... a longer car is gonna stick out, so you're gonna restrict that lane down, and if somebody hits somebody, then we'd be responsible for it. Uh, I think we can just go to one lane that's, you know, ten, twelve foot, and then do two sides. Uh, and that way it gives plenty of parking, and you know, o- o- only hindrance it is, it ain't really a hindrance, rather than going up, making a U-turn and coming down, like all of us do, you just have to go out Vine Street.
Yeah, that's what I do, I go up there and turn to her house, you know, and come back down, or I'll go to the doctor's office.
All of us do too, but we'll just have to make sure that.
A lot of times I'm going around, but I'm ready for that, you know, but.
Well, and it's, it'll, it'll open up a lot more, and we need it.
You know, there's one house there, the neighbor there, and he's got sometimes five, six vehicles there for him, you know? Some of them never move, one of them disappeared though, finally, I guess, but uh, I mean, I ain't got no problems with him, he's been fine as far as that goes, but it's just he's still not parking in front of his house all the time, they're, they're over here, or they're right in front of my doors. Sometimes I'm loading stuff, and it's aggravating, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, which I got, you know, big stuff, I can pull around back, but just bringing in stuff to the front, it's sometimes aggravating, we're having to block the street, put cones up, and run our flashers. You know, and we'll be bringing in a bunch more stuff, so we will be busy, I got a dumpster coming in too. And when they're doing all that work, trying to do all that construction, I mean, you got dumpsters there, they're taking up two spots, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, so I mean, I, I ain't too worried about it, if people wanna work here out there, find somewhere to park, but I don't want it to be a hindrance to where it keeps people from saying, well, we go over there, and we ain't got nowhere to park, period, you know, or, or during the day or anything else, so I just, I don't want it to become a problem to where uh, you know, word gets out to, to where that's the reason why they don't come to my gym, you know, but.
Right.
Uh, as far as everything else goes, I want the support from everybody, and anybody has anything they wanna tell me or add to it, or what their thoughts are on it, I'm, I'm here to help, and I hope it brings people here. I went and talked to Rod. Uh, I think, you know, there's a, there's a good plan there, and maybe even for you, Courtney, to, to help do, for some stuff to do, I'd like to talk about that, but uh, he's maybe gonna perform a menu for protein stuff, you know, for the gym to help out. Uh, something that's gonna bring business to him if he does that too, you know, people will go there to eat, and it's gonna keep people there longer on the street.
Like, you know, we, we wanna see.
I mean, I do too, I mean, I don't live in Duck Town, but I'm, my, my stuff's here, and you know, I could have found a different spot maybe to, to do it, it just, this is all just kinda fell in my lap, you know? I had the building first, and then had the equipment give to me for a big part of it, and then I've bought and added to it, and I was like, well, I might as well just put it in this space, and it's just kinda went from there, I never thought I would on a gym, you know? But, but we do, we're right there at it, it's a little bit of everything going on, but uh, I'll let Mel talk about that, I want her to talk a little bit on that, and if y'all don't care, I'll at least tell y'all what we got planned, and what's going on, and then we already do have the LLC, I've already got all that set up, I do need to come in here and get with Cheryl and get the uh, get her license and all for it, but uh, I'll talk with her maybe afterwards, so I can set that up.
Okay.
But uh, she's got a list here of stuff we wanna offer. Thoughts, concerns, or anything else like that, wanna hear y'all's feedback on it, tell me what y'all think. This is Melinda Bydaway.
Alright guys, so I'm not from here, but I am from Hope, um, the Benton area. I actually live in Cleveland, but I have a lot of family up here. Um, so I don't know if he's told you guys the name, but it's Built Solid Fitness, which is going along with Built Solid Construction. And not only is it gonna bring, you know, the ideas to, you know, get kids, not that there's kids on the street here, but, you know, start them, yeah, you know, get the kids off the street, get them somewhere to go besides video games, besides, you know, out getting in trouble or whatever, because I plan to start at age five, and getting them in there. Um, I have a background in, um, health and wellness, um, boxing, I was a professional boxer for years, I've been doing it for twenty, thirty years. And Muay Thai, um, health and fitness, um, I was a teacher, I'm a nurse now, so it's just like my background, just health and fitness, and to, to try to, to help others do that, and then Corey reached out to me. I prayed about it, I prayed about it, I prayed about it, and I was like, oh God, help me, you know, I'm stuck. And then he just kinda came up here and met with these two, and they're great, um, and then the town's great, so I feel like this is stepping on faith, and this is where God's led me, so. Um, the gym will actually be twenty-four seven, you'll have access to that. Um, you'll have access to the health coach, which will be private, um, trainer, which will be me. Boxing classes, there'll be adult classes, and there'll be, um, uh, kid classes, and it'll be separated, obviously. And there will be private boxing lessons for anyone who might wanna compete. You know, and maybe do that, whether you're an adult, teenager, or even a kid, because it starts at nine, um, years of age, and um, there is gonna be tanning, Brittany's gonna be doing spray tanning as well, um, batting cages in the bottom. Monthly memberships, we'll be doing that, there's extra perks to the monthly memberships, we're getting all that stuff squared away. Um, you'll have your own little access to get into the door, if you wanna do the tanning, that's gonna be involved as well. For one monthly class, you can come and do it day by day, if you'd rather do it that way. Um, there will be student discounts as well. Um, am I missing anything, Corey, on any of that?
No, not really, um. No, we just got a lot going on in one building, uh, you know, and it's not gonna bring just people to the gym. Uh, rainy days, you'll have, you know, obviously the batting cages, y'all probably haven't seen, you're welcome to come check it out. Uh, but we got the cages down there and stuff, we've got the one cage, we've got the nets, we've got the tees and the other hitting nets. Uh, we'll have some instructors doing some of that stuff, uh, with another organization, with Valor Baseball, they, or travel organization. Uh, we're representing them from Tennessee out of there, so there's gonna be some of those teams here and practicing, so the bunch of these people for the, that side of things can park down, back behind, uh, where we can, you know? Uh, I gotta talk with the guy that owns all that, if I can get ahold of him and see, but, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that'll work, you know?
Sure.
It will bring a lot.
No, it's gonna, it'll bring a lot of club.
Yeah.
Make that look a little better, cause it's looking pretty rough back there anyway, around those storage buildings behind the shop, but maybe in return, he'll let me just, I'll put the gravel down, whatever I gotta do, but that'll help as far as the boxing and the cages go. Now, everything else, you know, people will still be up there, and I still have my workers that come in and out. It's where we have our meetings at a time, so at times it can be fairly crowded if, if it matches up at the same time, but no, I mean, I think she's kinda referenced everything that we got going on. Uh, we're still trying to pull the kinks out of everything, figure it out. We wanna make it affordable, but we wanna make it profitable, but we also wanna make it, you know, presentable to kids and everyone else. This isn't restricted to one age group of a, of a facility, but, uh, or, or just to bodybuilders, or, or to whatever, we're we're looking, we're looking at the, the stuff for, um, what was it? For the physical ther, uh, for the, uh, Silver Star, is that the name?
Uh, Silver Sneakers.
Silver Sneakers, they, uh, you know, it's for.
Jerry, I shouldn't say Jerry, that's the wrong word for you. Sorry, that's the, that's the medical side. Um, for the, the elder over certain age, um, they don't have to pay, they won't have to pay, it's kind of funded to them, so we're getting that process in as well.
For the medical, they, they're required, they pay for so much exercise for the elderly or whatever, so they can, they can come in if their insurance covers, that we're trying to get set up on that organi, uh, with that organization. Uh, most of this will run off of an app. For the people that it can't, you know, they'll be able to come in and talk with us, we can set them up and hook them up. But you can do everything pretty much through that app, you can book the cages, you can book the spray tans, you can book the private lessons, you can do all that straight through the app that we got going on. So, uh, we're trying to make it easier, you know, and then Rod's wanting to try to, you know, put up some things and do grabbing your old foods, you know, for the protein bowls and different things like that, when you got you different people wanna eat healthier, you know, and do all that, so. Uh, and I may put something up in, in, in there as well, if we got the room to, to be able to do that too, you know?
And the idea's not just to make it working out, like, people's like, oh, health and exercise, oh, eat right, and that's, that's it, basically, that's, those two things, and it's really that simple, but you gotta make it fun. And, you know, you gotta make it to each their own, so, and, and that's what we're doing, and I feel, I foresee the gym growing, and, you know, just this next year, um, for different people, for different levels, different, depending on what they wanna do, and what their goal is. Um, it'll be, you know, to that person wanting, so I feel like it's gonna grow, and he might, we might even grow out of this gym eventually, but, you know, we gotta get started, and hopefully get your support.
The guy we spoke with that, that does the gyms, that does the system that set it up, probably struck me a little bit off when we, when we asked him the questions, you know, about the area, you know, about, when they're asking the questions, you know, how's the area, what's the area like, you know, how many people do you think you're gonna have? To, to do the, to do the card readers stuff, you pay by the members. And certain, over a certain budget of members, that price goes up for that system that I'm paying for on the monthly. So, he, when, when he told me that he thought we'd have two hundred members within less than a year, it kinda baffled me. So, i- if that's the case, I know we don't expect two hundred members in a space like that, but he said he's seen smaller gyms, and he's seen bigger gyms, and you know, it just depends on how it's ran. But uh, not having one in the area, and, and everybody that's reached out, I, I do think it'll do good to be stunned with that number for two hundred people within a year is kinda mind-boggling for me, so that's the part that got, got my wheels, got my wheels turning on it, you know, so. I mean, if you think about it, if you got a family of five, it probably doesn't really take that long to get, you know, to get to that two hundred members, you know, or something, but uh, he does it for a living, that's what he does, is set gyms up, and, and he seems to think that it's gonna do very well, he thinks within, you know, he thinks you can grow to five hundred members in no time, and and you know, obviously, we know all of them can't be in there at one time, but if you have it crowded like that, we're trying to put a certain amount of equipment in there that is suitable for people to use, not just taking up space, so that people can actually use the, and functional, because it's only twenty-four hundred square feet.
Even the athletes around Copper Basin, or, you know, whatever.
High schoolers.
Yeah, come in there, and I mean, and they, I can work one-on-one with them, whatever their goal is, um, or they can even, you know, do it by themselves, or however they wanna do it. But, um, one thing to piggyback on what Corey was saying about the, the, how you enter and get all of your friends. Not everybody's tech savvy, not everybody's gonna be using their phone. And I'm not talking about, that's not an age thing, that's just not everybody's gonna do it. So, you will have also like a, it's almost like a keychain type thing, isn't it? That you can enter also the members, you don't have to pull all this on your phone, and all this, you can do the old school way, and uh, it will, wait, you know, that way as well, so.
The other way is Bluetooth, you just click Bluetooth, and it opens your door, so, it's kinda cool.
There's multiple.
If everything goes plan, you know how that goes, I mean, we're waiting on this, we're waiting on that, certain things we're waiting on, uh.
You're picking the best time to start a gym.
Well, that was.
Everybody wants to go.
We've been working at it a little hard, but, yeah, that was the, that was the whole goal, was to sell it for a New Year's resolution, you know?
Oh, yeah.
To open it for the New Year's resolution, that's the, that's the mindset. And, and the reason, I think that's a good idea, I thought that was a good idea. Everybody else that's opening gyms thinks that same way, because that's what's got us a little bit in a bind, waiting on the system to be set up, software, because they're behind on it, because everybody's goal is to open it for the first four years.
We had an original idea, but evidently, yeah.
So, if, if all goes good, the plan would be the first Monday of the, the new year, which would be, I think, on the fifth. Uh, if it don't happen, it will happen, you know, but, uh, we're gonna try to do a thing to where we, once we get the system in place, which is supposed to be first of December, we can start kinda getting it started, we're gonna do like a promotional thing to where it locks someone in for life, if, if the first one hundred members sign up, they get a, you know, whatever discount we decide. So, that'll be for life, it won't be for the year, but it'll be for, for life for them, so. And, and that's one rate to hopefully just put it at a lower rate to get those hundred members, so that you always have those members as long as the gym's active. So, there's certain things that, that those people brought to the table, that's told us that, you know, we have. Besides that, I had no, I thought I was pretty close to being ready over all these years, we'd get, working on it just out of pocket and slowly doing it, I wanted to have it going a long time ago, it's just once I first looked into it, I just realized how much it was gonna be, and it's took me this long, but we're pretty, we're pretty close. Uh, I think we're gonna be able to do it, it's just, you know, I'm more worried about the time right now, so. But anyway, yeah, we just wanted to come in and talk about that and present it, and let y'all know, so y'all can help spread the word on it, and help us out and give us feedback, we don't wanna overstep or do anything wrong, or out of the way, we just wanna.
No, I think, uh, I think it sounds good, I think you're, I, I like to, that you're doing more than one area.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think that'll, that'll help you, uh, it'll help the community. Cause, you know, like the, like you're talking about the batting cages and the boxing and, you know.
We've traveled for that for years, you know, it's like I told my son about it, and he said, I drove for years to.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Blue Ridge, you know, the where.
You, you, like you said there, I think you may end up with more business than what you think you will.
That's what I'm tell, I'm telling my side.
I understand, that's.
But we, we have started, like.
Eventually, might have moved into a bigger place.
They kinda go hand in hand with the chiropractor, with the athletes, and the physical therapy side of it. So, it's all kind of intertwined and helps everybody.
It does.
And no matter what your goal is, we will help you get there, period. It's just gonna happen.
Goodness. Now, glad to see it. No, thank you, very informative. Uh, look forward to it, and we'll, we have, like I said, we have allocated the money, or some money for it or whatever, and, uh, so we, we understand what you're saying, and, and we agree with you, or I think.
Man, I'll have to do it, I mean, if I manage to, I, I got paint, we can go up there and help paint it, I mean, to save money, I don't care, I really don't, I'm not saying it to be funny, I'm saying it to help, you know?
Yeah. Well, we may, we may get to the point, maybe, maybe buy the paint and ask for some help.
I'll do it, I'll get the guys up there, I'll paint it. I mean, I've, I don't know how many lines of paint on these football fields, I can figure it out.
Yeah, it ain't that difficult either, ain't rocket science.
No, we can figure it out, we'll get up there on a Saturday or Sunday if we got to.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand how it is, I mean, everybody wants something done, but, you know, everything costs money, you know, so I don't, I don't expect y'all to go start working on that right away, or.
Well, like you said though, you know, we, we redid the budget, that was one of the things we budgeted for, was to change, to work on Main Street, so.
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
Uh, I got none.
Just listen.
Your motion to adjourn, then.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, see ya. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sign up, so.
And he doesn't buy more paint, literally, funnily enough, the drum lady.
I go, uh, McCaseville Park, they have it designed equipment, you ever seen it in there?
Yeah, we was like, that's a joke.
Yeah, a lot of people do.
Yeah, yeah.